This meeting is being transcribed and summarized.
Let's start the town Lloyd, regular meeting September seventeenth, and I'll ask Councilperson Rizzo to lead this. Uh, pleasure ladies.
My pleasure ladies.
I just.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have they had their mics on? Okay. Okay, just a, uh, couple reminders, I think they haven't changed us back to optimum channel twenty-two yet, so we're still on thirteen thirteen. Hopefully they, optimum gets that fixed for us. Kind of start with, we have a public hearing, but we're gonna open on local lot D. Can I get a motion to open a public hearing on local lot D?
Motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the public hearing is open on local lot D. Is there anybody here to speak? This is banning the crematories throughout the town. I'll leave it open until we get to the resolution. Okay? With that, we'll go right into the town, town board liaisons, and we'll start with, we'll start with beautification committee and council member Rizzo. And then just do your school after that.
Sure. Okay, so the fall flags are gonna be put up next week, and the flowers are gonna be taken down. Some of them still really look good, but, yeah, we're gonna take them down. We just wanna thank Frank and Stephen, again, whoever really helped water.
They did a good job. They didn't call Lenny and I once.
They did a good job this year, so we really do wanna thank them.
We felt, we felt left out.
Next year. So, we wanna thank them for their watering, and they have already started putting the planting mums and getting ready for the upcoming holiday season. Just a reminder that our scarecrow event will be on October eleventh at the DeStacy Junior Pavilion on the town field. That starts at ten, ten AM. And we were hoping to continue the window contest for Christmas, or the holiday season this year. So, we plan on having the information put out to businesses by the beginning of November, and then ballots put out, voting through December fourteenth, and then hopefully a trophy can be presented at the board meeting on the seventeenth in December.
Okay.
That's all I have for our beautification.
That's good. The town, the town looks great.
Yeah. And schools kind of short as well, as the school year's officially in full swing. Each building had a smooth transition starting the new year. All sports have also begun, and we're obviously wishing all of the teams a successful season. Reminder that taxes are due September thirtieth. Logan Carl was introduced as the this year's student representative, so he was at the board meeting and sworn in last night, which was, you know, always nice to see. And our districts are experiencing a shortage in bus drivers. This is kind of an important one. It's not just us, it seems to be, you know, the county, if not more widespread than that. And training is paid for by the district. They're even possibly maybe throwing out the idea of having a discussion of other incentives to get school bus drivers, you know, onboard. So, if anybody out there is interested in being a bus driver, please contact the Transportation Department. And that's it for me.
Okay, anybody have questions for Tiffany? Okay, well, we'll say on the left side of the table, we'll go to council member Guerrero on zoning board.
Okay, on the ZVA board, there were only two items, two public hearings, one was left open, and the other was closed. The one that was left open was YW Highland Realty LLC on Lockhart Lane. It's a four-family dwelling, and it's in a R quarter zone, and they're looking for relief of point zero seven, and they left that open. And they closed the public hearing for Lisa and David Ludwig, and they're on twenty-five Dirks Terrace, and they were seeking point zero four acres relief for an accessory apartment. And that is on a R half zone, and that's it.
That one on Lockhart Lane's been open for a while, too, right? Yeah.
It was bought and sold.
Right, okay.
The guy went ahead, the original guy went ahead.
I know he did, yeah. Cause I know we had violations there at one time, yeah, okay. That's the same one I'm thinking of, then. All right, anybody have questions for Mike? We'll move forward to council member Frano.
Okay.
You have events and lights and fire.
The New Pulse Rescue, the ambulance provider, they had a busy month, two hundred seventeen calls. Their average response was actually seven minutes, seven right on the, on the dot. There were four questionable calls that were excessive time. Three of them, when I inquired, were nursing home calls that were called in as non-life-threatening. So, and the other was at Franny Reese, so they had to literally go on, on the path. So, the time they got to the patient, it was a little time expended. But, again, they're, they're busy, and they are responding well, so, and nothing else but them. The fire department, um, excuse me. They had Chief Demetrow reports that we had forty-one alarms dispatched in August, average of twelve firefighters per call, the highest number was nineteen per call, number of apparatus responses, one hundred and six, firefighter hours for alarms was three thirty-eight, firefighters hours for meetings, fifty-four, hours for training, one fifty-two, and miscellaneous twenty-two. So, they were a little lower than they normally were, but still five hundred sixty-six hours to the town. Also, the fire department, speaking with Chief Demetrow, there's some Knox, Knox, Knox boxes along the rail trail to give, they're currently, there's locks on them now, the fire department doesn't have access, some of them coming down into, what's it, the High, High Bridge?
Yep.
So, they, Chief Demetrow ordered, ordered the lock boxes, or Knox boxes, excuse me, and they will be replacing the padlocks that are on those gates. So, the fire department will have immediate access to open those gates if necessary. They haven't been able to come down with the ladder truck to take care of the flagpole. They said it was gonna be this week. I'm still hopeful, it's only Wednesday, so soon as we can, if, if, if we can't get them, I, I really think we need to do something from the town. If we have to hire a lift, and we have someone in mind who could, would probably donate their time. But let's see what the fire department comes up with, cause we, it's the center of the town, and we should have the flag flying there. Excuse me. The lighting district, they haven't installed that, that light that we voted on on eighty-two North Road. I sent them a reminder yesterday, so that usually puts a little pressure on them. I also reported the two lights here behind the town justice. They were, they were repaired a few months ago, it seems like a few months ago, but now they're, they're not out, but they're partially on. So, we're waiting on them, and again, I will keep a little pressure on them to make sure we get that taken care of. The events committee, we don't, we don't have anything. I know Tiffany reported the event in October, but I do wanna mention the PBA has a pig roast at the Stacy Pavilion this Saturday, the twentieth, so you should, encourage you to support the PBA and go down and get some pulled pork, or whatever they, whatever they do with on a pig roast. I believe... What is it, thirty?
Thirty a ticket.
Thirty a ticket, okay. I thought, actually, I thought it was more, but, okay. And, oh, the pavilions, the heaters, the two heaters that you voted on last month, they were completed yesterday, I was there today, they actually worked, so now I'll get with, I got the materials list, I'll get a quote on, on the materials, and we have the contractor, Mr. Feinberg, who has said it will take him a day or two, so we will be, we'll be ready to enclose that and protect those, those bathrooms and keep them functional throughout the winter. End of reports.
Hey, did we come up with a schedule for locking and unlocking the bathrooms down at the town field? Somebody asked me that, and I didn't know the answer to it.
I didn't come up with a schedule yet. I know we talked about a time lock. I know they're getting used, cause many times as they come through town, I'll just swing through there.
Yeah, I'm more worried about them being locked overnight, and somebody opening them in the morning, so.
No, and I do, I see people at ten o'clock at night.
Yeah, but you shouldn't, because the park's closed at that time, so.
So.
Could you get with Frank and just work out some plan on that?
Yep.
Thank you. And then on lights, John, do you know if we had the two by Brannys fixed? One was out and one was flashing?
Were they fixed? I didn't know they were fixed, I didn't turn them.
I thought, I thought they came up in one of these meetings, maybe, maybe it was a workshop. Maybe that was Frank, cause that wasn't the Central Hudson lights.
Those are our lights, right?
Yeah, those are our lights.
Those are our lights?
Those are our lights.
Okay, so Frank's probably taking care of them.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of those.
Okay. Yeah, there's two by Brannys, and then the one that was damaged by the tree on Milton. I know Richie said the new light's out at his place, so we had to hire somebody probably to do that. I, I, maybe that was Frank I was talking to, so, okay.
John, I also think that on October the eleventh, on October eleventh, the same day that the scarecrow, I think the ladies auxiliary are also hosting their...
Fire safety.
Yeah, their fire safety for the kids, which it shouldn't be, you know, pretty close proximity.
I think almost every year it's the same, because we go from scarecrow to the fire.
We tried hard, I reached out with Les, to Leslie, too. I tried really hard, but none of the dates were matching up.
It makes a great day for a kid.
Yeah, it's a fun-filled day.
Keeps, keeps the kids occupied a little bit.
Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
Okay, for my stuff, the ECC, we had a meeting Monday, they finished their pool on Choddekey Lake, you know, their walnut pool, and so that's cleaned up a bit. They've got their Illinois Mountain Grant through, through now, they're just waiting on the contract, and then they have another grant for watershed characterization. So, both of them have to get the contract signed, so it looks like we fixed, there was a couple administrative problems in that, we got fixed. There were some scouts in here looking for, to help and get some community hours, but I asked them to contact you if we're, are we doing the cleanup on shred, shred day this year?
I don't think we're doing the fall. I mean, it's, it's probably, we, we probably added.
It's twenty-fifth, six weeks from now.
For sure.
Yeah, I told them to contact you, cause they were looking for hours, and, you know, if we, if we can get a few roads done, I guess that's fine, so. All right, so if somebody contacts you, that was me to send them to. All right, thank you. And that was it from, yeah, that was it from the, that was it from the ECC meeting. As far as Lloyd Community Development Committee, no new activity. We still have the five outstanding loans, and all payments are on schedule, so there is still money there to loan out, if somebody has or needs something with them. And then, the other thing was, I know Lenny and I were there earlier, the, the town police were doing cones for, cones for kids over at the, and there was actually quite a crowd there. So, it was, they were handing out stuff and, and giving them free ice cream cones, so they were all, it was a pretty good, it was a pretty good crowd, so thank them for doing that. Okay, council member Akmudi, you have the planning board, Highland Landing Park, and the rail trail.
Okay. Let's go to Highland Landing. There's going to be an art show in the building, uh, second and third October. I didn't get anything official. I talked to Mrs. Stork, and the problem that I have, but I will correct it one way or the other, there's a bunch of cabinets and things in here that haven't been installed. So, they're gonna have to be moved down, I'm gonna have to find a place to store them till their art show is over. And there's also some science supplies in here that are gonna have to come out for the art show. The only thing we'll leave in here is the fog bell from the bridge. Other than that, everything's pretty good. The geese are, you know, chase them out here and there, but that's about all we can do. Other than that, everything's good down at the park. Planning board. Planning board meeting for the twenty-eighth, for the twenty-eighth, that was actually pretty, it wasn't much. The old business, the planning board, was three fifty-five, five on Route nine W, that's the old Chevy dealer. That project was approved and is going forward. They have to do the demo first and what may have you, so the contractor and one of the owners, the engineer, he said it should be, once they get started, eighteen months to two years to complete that project. And Village Site Plan did receive a one-year extension. Judge basically said that we have to give them the extension because they started on light, so that's basically about it, as far as that goes. Now, the Hudson Valley Rail Trail, should I go over the meeting last night, or should I concede my time to the new president of the Hudson Valley Rail Trail? If you would, please. You want my notes?
Yeah, exactly. So, I am the new president of the Hudson Valley Rail Trail, starting officially last night at our trustee meeting, and it'll take me, obviously, a few months to sort of figure out strategically where we wanna go, what we wanna do. I think that, and I've talked to Dave about this, you know, I, I wanna see us invest and focus on capital projects that surround the trail. How can we do improvements, improving the cabooses, improving the pavilions, you know, whatever we can do to, you know, to improve the physical plant, if you will, of the rail trail. So, a lot of focus on that. We also, I don't know if anybody knows this, but we had gotten a grant some time ago from National Parks on doing strategic planning, sort of rewriting what we wanna be, how we wanna manage the park, how we wanted to manage the trail, you know, what are we missing? What are we, what should we be doing to raise funds? What should we be doing from a capital investment? So, we are done with that plan, we'll start to look at how we can execute that and how we can, you know, bring that forward. And again, I think we wanna isolate some, some fixed projects, and then we also wanna really focus on where can we partner with people like, you know, Sinek Hudson, and, you know, where they have obviously touch points to the trail, you know, how can we make that partnership better? How can we make that work? What else? See, I was, you caught me by surprise. What am I missing? I think that's it. I think, I'll do, I'll do better justice if he does this to me next time, but the...
He does it.
Yeah, it's perfectly fine.
He does it every time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Be prepared.
So, I think, and then the other things, I'll close, I think there are a few just sort of loose ends that we're trying to figure out. They're for, for reasons that are unbeknownst to me, in my first few weeks, we've had more vandalism on the trail than we've had in the last five years, which is a bit disconcerting. So, I think we have to figure out.
Is it, is it all kind of in, in one area, or is it spread out?
No, it's spread out.
Spread out.
It's spread out. So, you know, there's benches that are being damaged, there was a fence post that was broken, there was a faucet that was broken in the bathroom, you know, we had some damage to the bathroom, you know, that we had to get fixed. So, I think, look, there's nothing we can do to prevent that, but I, you know, we'll try to work on probably a better process, and we talked about this, a better process of how we manage that, and how we message that up, you know, to the town, and how we're more aware of what's happening with, like, the bathrooms, because that does concern me. I think, you know, we clean them fairly, I don't wanna say infrequently, but if, if you think about a public bathroom, probably cleaning three days a week may not be realistic during the summer.
I think we've increased it, though, correct?
Okay, so, I mean, I, I think, just things like that that we'll have to think about, and then we'll keep our eye on the, obviously, on the, on the vandalism side, the maintenance. The murals. See, you should never give me a mic. The murals, I don't know if you've seen them? Amazing? So, on the underpasses, we have completed multiple murals by this artist, there was an article in the Southern Ulster Times.
Yeah, last week, last, last week, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Those, I think that has inspired us to continue that, so we were talking about it last night, we'll, we'll start doing some public fundraising, cause we got a lot of positive feedback, so it would occur to me that we could probably publicly fundraise and get more donations for it to continue those. So, I think we have at least two more locations where we'd like to see those murals go up.
Total of four.
Yeah, exactly. And then I think, the only other thing that I think we wanna also expand is the historic interpretive signage, if you've all seen those, those really nice signs, and there's, there's another one that's coming. You know, I think we'll, we're gonna look at expanding those, Ford Bridge is probably a perfect example of when that is all said and done, you know, we'll do an, we can do a historic interpretive sign explaining the Ford Bridge and the history of that and all of that, so I think there's more of that that could come, and there's money readily available with places like Greenway that, you know, thrive on that educational side of, you know, of grant responsibility and, and adding education to things like the trail. So, it's right up their alley. So, we'll, we'll continue to look for that, and then, last one was the, we are applying for a Greenway grant to help us finish the Ford Bridge. So, that is an extremely capital intense project.
How much more do we think is left on there, or?
I think it depends on how much we end up doing and what those bids look like for the railings and the fences and what our approach is, but it's several thousand dollars, I mean, when, when all is said and done, and I, and we, if we're gonna do this, then we should extend the trails on either side of the Ford Bridge so that we have appropriate access, and there's railings and it's safe and all of that. So, I think, we saw some initial bids, and again, it's gonna be all in the design of what we decide, how, you know, how we wanna go, and so we asked for the maximum amount that we could.
Nineteen thousand.
Exactly, thank you. So, we, you know, hopefully we get that, and if we do, then that would certainly afford us the ability to, no pun intended, to complete the bridge, so. Yes, ma'am?
I had, I had a call from a woman this morning who was just coming off the rail trail on New Pulse Road at the Pavilion, the Pavilion and Caboose down there, and she said she saw a car coming, and he was coming quite quickly, and I know that town cars and everybody go on there, and she kinda did this and waved him down, and the guy goes, "What, am I not allowed on here?" He goes, "My GPS told me to go this way." So.
I don't think the GPS will send you on there.
I don't think so either.
Actually, that's the second time it's happened.
Yeah, okay.
It has randomly happened.
Yes, it has.
We've all had that occasion.
So, she would, she would like signs.
One, one bump into my wife Nancy, which I wouldn't wish that upon my worst enemy, but that, you know, that, she took care of that, made them turn around, so.
Okay, and, and the only other thing, we did design, and I think I sent it to you and Peter and some others, we're trying to get people to stop at Highland Woods and up here.
Yes.
And we did start designing kind of a gate system that we could fling open and have the stops, cause people have to stop at that intersection.
Yeah.
I, I got some, some complaints initially about, well, if you put them that way, they can't go straight through them, and that's really the, what you want, you want them to stop there, because a car's coming off two ninety-nine can, can, can hit them. So, I, Lenny and I were talking about who we can get to kind of find that type of gate and draw us up a plan so we can all look at, so we haven't forgot that.
No, it's a good point, and I did see, cause I, I think, we talked about this briefly last night, I think we agree that, you know, obviously, the orange cones are not the, you know, are not a permanent fixture.
Not unless you put them in the ground, but then, then you have maintenance issues.
Exactly, and I think there, I, we, we had seen a few designs, and I did some research on some sort of S ballards, if you will, so that, you know, it, again, it's not a restrictive gate, but it would force them to come to a crawl or walk it through, if you will, so. But yes, we, I think everybody consensus is agrees that that needs to be done, and frankly, that would also probably, the trailhead stopped cars from going down the, the trail.
Yes, it would, and, and I think it will, and you could have the gates so they swing open for maintenance and lock in place when you put them back.
Exactly.
Okay. So, we'll, we'll work on that.
How about bicycle education?
Yeah, I think, look, I, I think there's, there's, we've done random spot education, we, we have these rule signs that nobody reads that, that, you know, are on the, on the trail. I think, you know, there are, there are over, and, you know, it gets confusing in fairness to people, because, like, you know, if you stop an e-bike, they'll cite Empire State Trail Code or whatever that allows some level of that e-charged or battery-charged bicycle on those, on those trails. So, I think, you know, it's that fine balance, and, you know, you would have to patrol the thing seven days a week.
It's really hard to enforce, it is.
To enforce the speed limit or the safety or whatever.
Courtesy.
Very hard to.
Courtesy, exactly, so I think it's, it's common sense.
They come up behind you, and they, they don't warn you.
On your left.
And they come close to you.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I've almost got hit walking a couple times, I don't know how to.
Cleaning graffiti.
Yeah.
Right, you, right, the night we were cleaning the graffiti.
That's right, we almost got hit.
You almost got hit, remember?
Almost got taken out by a car. And I don't know, yeah, and I don't know the solution to it, I mean, if somebody has a solution, come on, come up with it, I...
Exactly. No, I, I don't think, there's no perfect solution, but I think, you know, we can obviously continue to do education.
Continue, yeah.
And awareness, and we are gonna refresh the signs, so, you know, we'll, we'll be putting those up, we have a, a new sign designed, so. One other thing, see, I'm not gonna stop. The parking lot on Havilland Road, there's the area, and I'll address this, cause I know there's, there's people that, you know, physically take care of it, obviously, it doesn't look that great, needs some maintenance, et cetera, but I think a broader conversation, and we'll have a better prepared discussion about this at some point, is that I think we would like to do some level of landscaping and sort of redress and make that entrance look a little bit better. It is a main entrance to the trail, it's a trailhead, we should refurbish the main signs anyway. The sign at both pavilions need, desperately need refurbishing, and, and so that's something that we are gonna do, you know, sooner than later, but I also think we just would like to, you know, we're painting the caboose at Havilland, so it would seem appropriate for us to fix, enhance the landscaping, that's a, you know, that's a great area of investment, obviously, I would see. That's, you know, that's a great area of investment, obviously, I would see for our money, you know, to improve the look and feel of it, depending on how, you know, the extent that we went to. And obviously, there was nothing done in those areas, surrounding areas, because of the pending parking lot, you know, project, so.
Okay.
Okay, I'll stop now.
Thank you. Any other questions for Eric?
Yes.
One more. We got one more question.
Did you talk to Richie about the woodchuck hole where the stairs come up, the 9W?
No, I will do that, I will do that tomorrow. So.
Okay. If not, I'll get a hold of him.
Okay.
And the membership for the rail trail right now is 129. They're still looking for more members. So, if there's anybody out there that would like to join and to help or whatever.
Absolutely. Now's the time. So, anybody that's out there listening or whatever, you know, we are always looking for volunteers. We're looking for, you know, committee leads, you know, people that are interested in maintenance, all of that. You know, Peter loved to do a lot of that maintenance, and I think, you know, which was awesome, and that was Peter. And I think, well, you know, now we'll look for, you know, people to take some of that role and maybe we can do it, you know, some, in some sense, how the beautification committee sort of handles, you know, the area. I would envision the same look and having, you know, volunteers that are specifically interested in doing some of that. So, okay?
Thank you, Eric.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I think that's it for the reports. We'll move on to old business. And we'll start off with Illinois Mountain Connector Trail, the Greenway Grant next steps. And Heather Blakely from Sina Hudson is with us.
Hello, nice to see you all this evening. So, I'm here tonight because we have proposed, a package of proposed signage for branding and implementing, finishing the implementation of the Greenway Grant that the town holds for this very purpose of continuing the branding and implementation of the John Burrows Black Creek Trail. So, I brought tonight some, the latest map, I don't know what that was, a packet of signs. The first page is the map, and it just shows an overview of where the different signage would go. And mostly, it's, the idea of this package is to use existing sign structures already there at the town, add a sign to the structure where there's a missing gap. And even, and I spoke with Frank Alfonso and Eric at different points in the time with Charles Glasner last week, just to review kind of the proposals, where they're going. And they seem on board with it, and they're, you know, supporting our recommendations here. I'm, we're about to look at the final budget numbers for this, but we have, as I said, the Greenway Grant expires at the end of November. So, the grant could still cover fabrication of the sign, which is matched by the highway's in-kind labor. There's still some in-kind match that the highways needs to catch up on. Some has already been spent to do the initial clearing on the Illinois Mountain Trail. But there'll be, there'll need to be more. So, in the packet, I also have some recommendations to improve some of the structures, such as, some of them are a little bit worn out and could just use a fresh staining or fresh painting. And so, that would take some hours. I'll leave it to your discretion to authorize which staff or highway crew member would do that. So, just quickly going through the signage package, we have an entry sign at the 299 Boat Launch, an entry sign proposed for the Rotary Pavilion entry structure, and proposed kiosk map. So, basically, it's kind of an entry, entry point to the John Burrows Black Creek Trail. It's very similar in content, or actually, it's exactly the same in content as the Eagle Scout project that was installed at 299. So, this is just a supplemental kiosk entry point, and it faces the rail trail, and it seems appropriate to put it there. There are a couple of signs putting along a portion of the rail trail until the point where would the trail continue into mountainside woods. I did speak with, I was in touch with David Weinberg, actually after we met a couple of weeks ago. So, he was, I walked him through to, as well. So, he's on board with it as long as it's discreet.
So, he's still on target to do what he needs to do?
He said he is planning to do a rough out of what he was planning to do, which is, you know, a small trial. We actually walked it out and adjusted it a little bit. I guess what we were trying to specify, you know, was a little bit wider. He was doing more of a small pedestrian path, and we were trying to make it a little bit wider, you know, because it's connecting bikes and pedestrians, so we wanted it to be six to eight feet wide. So, he had some concern about that costing him more, but that's another conversation we can address. And, but as far as the signs, he was fine with the different locations that we had proposed. We have some signage in this, both for the Greenway Grant and for the additional grant that we're partnering on through OPRHP's and EPF grant. So, but this is the complete structure, a complete package of signage. We'll have to go back again to you, but, and you can get a full sense of what the whole build-out would be. There's a couple interpretive signs in this package also shown, one on the rail trail, two on the rail trail, one close to the Rotary, one at 299 Boat Launch, and one at the Red Trailhead at Buryan Park.
The one at 101 New Paltz Road?
Uh-huh.
Where you want to put John Burrows Black Creek Trail on the existing sign somewhere. So, that has to be addressed. And if I could skip back a little bit, you didn't get the picture of, by Weinberg's property where it meets the trail? It was all widened out. There was a little mini excavator sitting there?
Oh, he's already started.
Yeah, we were trying to, we were trying to, I think we were trying to determine it, because there's one apparently that's marked out, and there's one where an excavator is sitting, which are not...
The same.
The same.
Right. It comes all the way down to the rail trail.
Yeah, yeah. There was different markings. I walked it with him. I didn't know he was starting already, but...
And then I think as far as just the rail trail goes, so, just for clarity, so there's the existing wood kiosk that was, it's been there since the trail was built, that sits at the parking lot of New Paltz Road.
Yeah, 101.
One side is covered in sort of unused brochure holders from a time past. And that's the side that we would advocate for having this sign. That's perfect.
Yeah, we talked about that one.
And essentially, refresh that kiosk, which that's what needs to be refreshed. So.
Good.
Yep.
Okay.
I did ask Frank to send an email to, just to corroborate his support. I don't know if he sent one to you, but I can ask him to follow up.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing it, but he could have.
I can remind him.
Okay. Good. And you're all good up at Buryan Park too with all the...
Yeah, we met there and we walked through the different places.
Because there was a fence up there that had to be repaired also, right, or is that...
So, that is something, yeah, we had recommended a while ago to replace at least that left-hand side of the double gate or open it up and reconfigure pedestrian entrance for there. So, some of the signs would go actually on a newer chain link finish. And hopefully, the highway department could do that.
All right. Any questions for Heather?
Thank you.
I mean, it looks like it's a pretty comprehensive package.
Sure, yeah. I would just point to one thing at Buryan Park. There's one page on Buryan Park, second to last page. So, we just talked about using one side of that existing kiosk and kind of filling that with the John Burrows. There were a number of signs that could, at least the rules sign could be relocated on the green building. I guess it's the lifeguard office.
Right, snack bar.
Snack bar, okay. So, there's already a no pets sign there. We just relocated, and Frank had no problem with that. That way, we can also just make it consolidated, Buryan Park information versus John Burrows information.
And that one may need painted also, if I remember.
Yeah, that's, we recommended some painting or staining. Both the kiosks have old cedar shake roofs, and some of them are missing. That's it.
Okay. Any other questions? Are we good? Okay. Thank you, Heather, for the finishing this and getting it out of the way.
I didn't check with Adam, but we had, he's water department. I know he's been on the conversations before about replacing that chain link fence, so I can follow up on that. But already, it's, some of the signage that was on there is, I can't even read it. That was the map for Illinois Mountain, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Heather.
Okay, so let's move forward. I did want to close out, we talked two meetings ago about, there was a concern about mountainside, and I'm going to send this over to that side. Tiffany and Mike. There were some concerns about, you know, drainage and with something wrong at mountainside wood flowing onto the property next to it. We had the, of course, we had a resident come in at the last meeting. So, last, I think it was last Wednesday, we went up there, Mike, myself, Dave Barton, Anthony and Andy Learn from CPO. And Andy went back and drew up the map that kind of shows there's about 200 square feet less now. If you look at this map, the black line was, the black line was what was supposed to be covered by, you know, the runoff. Everything outside the black line would have flowed back towards the other property. Well, the way that they build it up now, everything from the blue line actually is the only thing that flows out. So, everything from the blue line flows to the east now, in the northeast. And it sloped, and it doesn't look like there was an issue. There are a couple downspouts coming off the back of the roof, so there is some impervious surface that goes, drains to the back. But the developer put two soakaways in. They're five-foot soakaways with, as an extra precaution. And we believe, according to, you know, our engineers and our SWIP guy, who's Anthony, that this is probably going to get about 10 to 20% less water than it got before. And...
What was Andy, our town engineer, what was his recommendation? Because I know he wanted to go back and check the elevations.
Yeah, he went and checked the elevations. He's the one that drew this map. So, that's what he's saying. The blue line has actually moved further west, which makes it more sloped towards the front to where the, towards the pond, towards the, if you remember all the basins and where they capture everything, right? So, and we stood there and we saw the slope, so remember we're standing on the end. So, I think this one's put to bed. I mean, if anybody has questions on it, are you satisfied?
The engineer, he's the man, you know.
And I think the resident was satisfied. We spoke to him. So, I think this is put to bed. I would, I mean, there was a big article, you know, shaken down, saying this thing was a problem. I would love to see Southern Ulster Times saying it really wasn't a problem. I don't know if they'll go back and do that, but, you know...
The problem's been corrected.
The problem's been, really wasn't a problem to start with. But, you know, it just kind of makes the developer look bad in this case where he shouldn't have, because there are some times when they do have problems. I got it. But the point is, you know, it's fixed. It's been, it's better than it was, and he even put an extra precaution in with the soakaways. So, you know, it's unfortunate the way it did happen. But if there's another issue, you know, just let us know. I think that the lesson we learned from this is, you know, let's let the analysis get completed before it goes in the newspaper or before we say it's a major issue. So, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, that's not...
All right. Because then...
Not how they operate.
So, we'll move on. I think that was it for old business. There was no new business unless the board has something they want to bring up. Okay, we'll move forward then to privilege of the floor. Okay, we have nobody for privilege of the floor tonight. So, then we'll move forward to motions and resolutions. I'm not actually getting dinner tonight. Okay, we'll move forward to motion A. It's to permit Alexandra Fattabone to hold a candlelight vigil for Charlie Kirk on a town field on Sunday, September 21st, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Just a quick question on that too, though. Is that going to have any police representation?
Yeah, she's talked to the chief.
Okay.
The chief.
I've seen a lot of back and forth on social media, so, okay.
Chief Janso and Lieutenant Rollis are talking about it today.
Okay.
Okay.
But I think there's extra cover.
Yeah, so it was my fault for procedure. For figure, I didn't go, we should have had discussion.
I know he didn't. He was talking while I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Who's paying for the police? Is the town going to be paying for the police?
It's not going to require any overtime. It's with regular staff. Okay. And so now, let me, since I didn't go to the discussion point, which I should have, I'm sorry. So, now let's move on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay. Resolution B is to accept the resignation of Alyssa Fassano from the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, follow procedure. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Resolution C is to purchase two Phillips Heart Start FRX AED units to the cost of $2,107.35 each from Heart Start, one each for the town field in Highland Landing Park. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? And these have to be mounted outside, so they have to have the cover and everything, because, you know, those fields aren't, you know, they can't, there's no inside placement.
Should, or maybe it happened. I don't, I remember some sort of discussion about it, about possibly holding like a training for them or something to that? Am I making that?
Yeah, I think most of the, like, the sports teams, their coaches are normally already trained. Or they're required to get...
I think the coaches are required.
Yeah, they're required to have that training. But if there's anybody from the town, we can get training for it, sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay. Resolution D is to authorize the supervisor to sign the 10-125 to 930-2026 contract with the workplace for EAP for the Town Lloyd employees at a cost of $2,125 for the contract term. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
These people have been doing this for a long time.
Yeah, they do all our employee physicals and drug testing, et cetera.
Oh, the workplace, okay. Got it.
Yes, workplace, yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, resolution E, and this is to update the streetscape. So, this is because we had got, we had gotten extra, extra money added to this, and then we had to extend the date, so we had to do a new resolution on it. So, resolution E is for the Town Lloyd streetscape improvement. And this is authorizing implementation and funding in the first instance of the 100% of the federal aid and the state marcellary aid eligible costs of transportation, federal aid, and appropriate funds. Whereas the project for the streetscape improvements in Highland Hamlet, Town Lloyd, and you can see the PIN number, is eligible for funding under Title 23 U.S. Code. Calls for the apportionment of costs. Such programs would be borne in a ratio of 80% 20 federal funds and 20% non-federal funds. Whereas the Town Lloyd desires to advance the project by making a commitment of 100% of the non-federal share of the construction and construction implementation phases. Now, therefore, the Town Board duly convenes hereby to resolve that the Town Board approves the subject project, and the Town Board authorizes the Town Board to pay the first instance 100% of federal, non-federal share of the construction. It sounds duplicate, but construction inspection and project resolves at a sum of $949,687.50, which is minus the match of $131,000 hereby appropriated from, you can see the account number there, and made available to cover the cost of participation. And it's further resolved that the event of full and federal, non-federal share of costs of project exceed the amount, the town shall convene as possible to appropriate an excess amount immediately upon the notification by the town supervisor. And it's further resolved that the town supervisor and Town Lloyd is hereby authorized to execute all necessary agreements, certifications, reimbursement... certifications, reimbursements federal, and marshally aid on behalf of the Town Lloyd with New York State DOT in connection with the advancement and approval of the project, and providing the administration the project, and project costs of permanent funding of the local share. Be it further resolved that in addition to Town Supervisor following municipal titles, deputy supervisor, town engineer are also hereby authorized to execute any necessary agreements on behalf of the municipality and sponsor with DOT in connection with advancement of the state and local agreement. Resolved that certified copy of this resolution be filed with New York State, Commissioner of Transportation, and any necessary agreement in connection, it's further resolved, this shall take effect immediately. Can I get a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Wendy.
Freino?
Yes.
Bobcheck?
Yes.
Achmody?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Yes.
Okay, motion move, motion pass. Okay. Resolution F, and this is seeker for Local Law D. Resolution, whereas the Town Lloyd has introduced Local Law D, a local law amending the town code, section 108, to define and prohibit crematories and crematoriums throughout the town to promote the public health, welfare, and safety within the town, whereas said local law constitutes an unlisted action under New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, the Part 1 and Part 2 of a full environmental assessment form has been prepared on behalf of the Town Board, and after reviewing Part 1 and Part 2, and considering the factors contained, and considering environmental effects as contained in the local law to define and prohibit crematories and crematoriums throughout the town, the Town Board of Town Lloyd has determined that the adoption of this local law will have no significant environmental impact. Now therefore, it is resolved the Town Board of Town Lloyd that Local Law D 2025, a local law amending the Town Lloyd zoning code to define and prohibit crematories throughout the town, will have no significant environmental impact, and the board hereby issues a negative declaration pursuant to Part 617 of the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion G, I'll ask one more time, is there anybody here to speak on Local Law D? So we've had no comments, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing on Local Law D.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, resolution H. Resolution, whereas Local Law D, a local law amending the Town Lloyd zoning code, section 100-8, to define and prohibit crematories and crematoriums throughout the town, was introduced at the Town Board on 20th day of August 2025 at 7:00 PM, whereas the town clerk published and posted a notice of public hearing for September 17th at 7 o'clock, and circulated pursuant to the town code and New York State General Municipal Law to the Town Lloyd Planning Board and the Ulster County Planning Board, whereas the public hearing was held on 17th day of September 2025 at 7:00 PM, at which time all interested parties were given the opportunity to be heard. Now therefore, it's resolved that Local Law D of 2025, a local law amending Chapter 100 zoning, section 100-8, to define and prohibit crematories and crematoriums throughout the town being acted as in the form attached Schedule A as if fully set herein. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Freino?
Yes.
Bobcheck?
Yes.
Achmody?
Yes.
Guerrero?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Yes.
Okay. And that is?